All right, good evening, everybody. This is the Upper Darby Township Planning Commission for November. We'll call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. Debbie is nowhere from Debbie? I mean, I'm not sorry, not from Cassandra?
I believe she is still in Italy, but should be back for our her
Okay.
Our final meeting in the year and her final meeting as as her term.
Okay, fair enough. All right, I need a motion to approve our minutes from August. Second, all favor? Aye, motion carries. Don't believe we have any communications or bills. We have a community and economic development report. Hi Rita.
Hello Rita, thank you as always. Are we live? Yes. Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you for having, giving me the opportunity to do a brief report. I appreciate it. As you know, we are getting close to the time where we need to look at the comprehensive plan and update it. As we are getting closer to 2026, that and that plan gets published in 2028. We are really, I'd like to start thinking about it. And when I attended the state planning conference last month, it was very much on my mind. So, as you know, our current comprehensive plan calls for neighborhoods to be connected to the commercial districts. It calls for attention to our transit oriented development. It calls attention to amenities, signage, wayfinding, safe streets, which we're going to have a presentation on tonight. And I went to a presentation as I was thinking about the development of Upper Darby, how the population has changed, what we might want to be looking forward to with housing. Affordable housing is very important to Mayor Brown. So, some interesting information for you to think about, I will share. In 1960, over 44% of all American households included parents with children, and slightly over 13% of households were single with no children. Today, that's actually inverted. So today, 44% approximately of the households in America are single households. And about, you know, 15% are the traditional married parents living together with children. So, single person households in America increased from 6.9 million in 1960 to 38.1 million in 2022. And of course, our baby boomers have been a, is part of that aging population. And many of them are empty nesters, many are single households. And I reflect upon my own neighborhood here in Drexel Hill, where I raised happily a family with neighbors that had children, and now all those kids are in college or pretty close to it. And we've had three houses in the last couple of years sell. And it was empty nesters moving out and families with young children moving in. And I don't know where all those three families went, but a couple of them did move out of Upper Darby. And I was thinking, how can we keep people in Upper Darby? How can we create an ecosystem of housing? So, I further learned at the conference that we have some great opportunity being here in Pennsylvania, because the southern states, the Sun Belt, where people have traditionally gone to retire, the weather is getting more unpredictable and hotter. So there's actually a trend toward retired people wanting to live in more northern states, which is, and Pennsylvania is one of them. So it's a really great opportunity. So, how do we think about this for Upper Darby? We think about creating housing that would suit a single or two person household. We think about denser housing developments, fewer bedrooms perhaps, easily accessible goods and services. A lot of older people, a lot of people in general like to walk to the grocery store or walk to get their goods and services, which completely aligns with our comprehensive plan to make sure those business corridors are connected closely to the neighborhoods. Excellent healthcare is something that we will want to think about. And you are very familiar with the challenges over the last couple of years with healthcare services, ambulance services, et cetera. So how do we attract those healthcare services to Upper Darby? And then recreational amenities, open space, paths, et cetera. And thinking about it toward, you know, an aging, an older population, what is it that they would like to see in those amenities? So, I will endeavor over the next few months to just bring some interesting information to every meeting as we start to think about our comprehensive plan. In current news, the township has revised our first time home buyers program. That is funded by our community development block grants, and it is for low to moderate income individuals who qualify. The plan has had a cap of $10,000 for down payments. We have doubled that to $20,000. And previously, it took the homeowner 10 years to amortize and not have to pay back any of that grant. We've changed that to five years. So instead of a 10% decrease a year, it's a 20% decrease a year. And when we have people in homes, owning homes, building wealth, that helps our economic development, because then they have more ability to go out, purchase services, eat at restaurants, et cetera. So, this is completely funded by the federal government, and we are very pleased that we are, we were able to make such significant changes. We also have just awarded and are working on the contract for our small business resource center. The council with the ARPA program from the pandemic funds, America Recovery Act, they allocated $3.8 million for business corridor revitalization, small business resources, and a grant program. I think I've said before to this group, it's really illustrative to me. A lot of our small businesses in Upper Darby are actually micro businesses. They're very small. And for them, it might just be getting a new industrial freezer that will make all the difference between them being successful and thriving and maybe, you know, going out of business. So, we've engaged an organization, we're going to be presenting more at the December council meetings, there'll be a presentation at the second meeting, where once that contract is negotiated, we will introduce the consulting firm that will be working closely with my team to serve our businesses. And finally, I just wanted to share a video. The township was awarded a grant for a studio court, an outdoor recreational amenity that is slated to go at 7,000 Walnut Street. It is, there we go. The sound is a little weird, but I think you'll, you'll be excited to see the visual. So 7,000 Walnut was where the community center was slated to go. It's currently a vacant lot, it's got a cyclone fence around it. The studio court is going to be the primary amenity, but we will be developing over the next several months of the amenities that'll go around with it.
This is a prototype or something, or something that's similar?
Yeah, this is, this is actually in San Francisco.
Okay.
Yeah. And ours will have two sides. So you see where there's like a circuit where people can use it at their leisure. On the other side is just a floor basically, where people can do yoga classes, dance classes, et cetera. The art on the studio court, we've actually opted for the package where we can employ a local artist. So the art that is on the studio court will be customized to Upper Darby. And things we're thinking about for the amenities surrounding the studio court, of course, is seating, landscaping. I was talking with the team today about some sort of, you know, pad where you could bring in a coffee cart or other food. Maybe an outdoor stage, so performances could happen in the summer. We really want to maximize what we do with, with this parcel. And again, part of, you'll remember, our Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel was specifically a question about how do we create more open space and public space in the downtown area? So, this national fitness campaign, the local partner to them is Independence Blue Cross, they were very excited about having this studio court so close to our downtown. It's not something that they've done in such a way at their other locations. Well, we can't hear that at all, can we Josh?
What?
Oh? A bit better. This will also be funded by our community development block grants.
They provide these wraparound services that from a city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come, presented to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
We serve almost 1.2 million members across the state. And this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free health and wellness opportunities for our community. So I would actually invite cities and organizations, big and small, to explore the opportunity to invest in the fitness courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We are committed to raise over $1 billion to bring the campaign to 5,000 cities and schools, building the largest outdoor fitness movement in the world. Join us, let's make world-class fitness free.
So construction should start next year. Are there any questions?
I have a couple. Small business resource grant program, that's, I mean, as far as, how easy is it for businesses to get these types of grants? Is it a lot of red tape, or is it relatively easier?
So it's going to be an Upper Darby grant program.
Okay.
So the consultant will help us develop it.
Okay.
The first thing they're going to do is go out on the corridors and meet the businesses where they are.
Okay.
And understand what these businesses need. And we did build into the RFP, the requirement that in addition to English, they do everything in three additional languages. So once we have the needs assessment, they will develop the grant program with the parameters for it, and the barrier to entry should be very low, as, as long as they can fill out and provide all the relevant information, which the resource center will help them do, provide that technical assistance.
All right. And then, comprehensive plant question, we have to get a consultant onboard, correct, for that?
Yes.
When does that, when do you think that process should start?
It'll probably start mid to late next year, doing the RFP.
Okay.
And having them onboard right at the beginning of '27.
Gotcha, okay. That's all I have, anybody else?
Yeah, just, just some comments that you have made about the comprehensive plan. So, affordable housing, you know, I, I hear that term a lot. I'm not sure I completely understand the definition of it, but, because I think Upper Darby Township is one of the townships that does have affordable housing for people compared to other townships and counties in the area. And you also were talking about what keep, I've lived here for 62 years. So, I know what keeps people in the township, and this is school district. So that really is the driving force. And people are moving out because of taxes. And young families move in, but then they don't stay, and they move out when their kids want to go to school. So I know we don't have anything to do with the district, but if you did a survey of why people are moving, that's one, that's probably one of the biggest things, is the school district and this, and public education. And if you're looking for having people stay, then I suggest you look at age restricted communities. And I know that's come up multiple times in the township, but that's what people want. They would like to stay 55 and older, because that gives them a break from the school taxes. So, moving forward, I think these are things, you know, if you're truly serious, because I bought my parents' house, and, you know, and at the time, that's kind of what happened in our neighborhood. When parents got older, the kids bought the house, but that, that's just not happening anymore.
No, it's a very, very different time.
Yep, and people are, they're just moving out. They're just moving out of Upper Darby.
Yep.
And they're moving to Springfield and Havreford. It's not like they're moving to another state. And, but these are things, and if you want, like, older people to stay, I think you need to look at these age restricted, honestly gated communities. That's kind of what people want.
Well, all of those elements are certainly things we will be looking at. I mean, affordable housing has to do with the population who's here that can afford it. And we do have a large low to moderate income population. And we do have a lot of rental housing. So, we have people in that population who are in the rental housing, and there is a percentage of them that would very much like to get into a, a home that they own. That still very much remains a dream for many people. So, we are looking at programs like the first time home buyers program. We are also looking at programs, and these are relatively new in the industry, of programs that help property owners of apartment buildings make sure that those apartments are up to, you know, a high quality. Sometimes, property owners struggle with keeping their, their apartments occupied, and that can create a little bit of a downward spiral, as they, they lower rates, and then they don't do the upkeep, et cetera. And we do have some of those issues in Upper Darby. So reaching out to those large property owners is also on the list, and helping get them connected with grants that can help those renovations happen for elevators and roofs and, you know, fire suppression systems. We're a large municipality, so
Yeah, I know.
We have to have all the, you know, the tools in our kit. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you Rita.
Thank you.
There's no land development this month, nothing came in, okay. All right, Safe Streets for All, public presentation by Michael Baker International.
Good evening Commissioners, I'm Laura Espina, and I am the Planning Department Manager for Michael Baker International's Philadelphia office, and the project manager for this project. And with me tonight, I have Bianca Penunto, who is one of our planners on the team. So the township has retained Michael Baker International to do a Safe Streets for All plan for the township. So tonight, I will give you an introduction to our team, explain what Safe Streets for All means, our overall planning process, our initial safety analysis findings, and then have some discussion questions for you, so we can get your input on the plan, and then I'll talk about next steps. Next slide please. So this is our team. We are made up of transportation planners, engagement specialists, and graphic designers. And so, we are working on this project together with the township staff. Excellent. So a quick overview of what we mean by Safe Streets for All. SS4A is a federal grant program for transportation projects, and the overall goal is to make our streets safer. There are two types of grants. One is a planning grant, and the township received that planning grant in order to retain Michael Baker and to do this plan. But then another very important piece is implementation grants. And one of our goals for this plan is to set up the township so that they're eligible for and can easily go after these implementation grants once the plan is finished. So, we're following what we call a safe system approach. And so, the, the bottom line is traffic deaths and serious injuries are unacceptable. So how do we address that, knowing that humans make mistakes? And so it's addressed through three primary things. Engineering or design of our streets, education for drivers and cyclists and pedestrians, and then enforcement. And so we are looking primarily at that first piece, the, the engineering of how the streets are laid out in the township and what can be done to make them safer. So the goals for the project is basically, you know, to make the township streets safer for everybody. To come up with actionable interventions that the township can do in specific locations, so that dangerous streets do become safer for all users. So it's for pedestrians, for cyclists, for people who may have mobility issues, as well as for drivers. And we are really basing our recommendations on a community engagement process, and I'll talk of what that process is a little bit later. But it's not just data that we're looking at, we're also looking at the lived experiences of the people who live and work here in the township. And we're also building off of what's been done at the county level. So Delaware County has done a Vision Zero Plan, they have done a Safe Streets for All Plan. We're not being redundant, we're just taking those broad recommendations that have been done at the county level, and really applying them to here in Upper Darby. And then the final goal is to make sure that the plan is finished by May 31st, so that you satisfy the requirements of the grant for the project. So just to give you a little insight into our planning process, this is our overall timeline. As you can see, we're in November, we're in month four. And so we are doing engagement at a number of different levels. We have a steering team that is providing guidance on the process. We met first time back in October, and we'll be meeting again in December, and then two more times throughout the process. We had surveys that were distributed around the township and was on the website. Initially, those, that survey period was supposed to end on October 31st, but we extended that time to November 14th. So, we're still compiling all of the results from that survey, because it just finished on Friday. And then we're doing different meetings and engagement opportunities. So we had a booth at your international festival in, in September, and got quite a few comments and input at that. We had a feedback session last month, and had some good participate, participation in that meeting, doing presentations to the Planning Commission, like I am tonight, and getting the word out. We also have a website that I'll talk about in a little bit. So, we're taking all of that input that we have gotten through the engagement process, and we're putting it together with the data that we have collected in our analysis. And with that, we'll be coming up with concept plans, and then we'll end the project with a draft, and then final plan that will be presented to the township. So a little bit more insight into our engagement process, we're really doing engagement in what we call three pushes or surges. The first one happened in this fall, that we really just finished on Friday. And that had the pop-up, the feedback session, the, the website, and the surveys. We also interviewed stakeholders and had questionnaires for stakeholders, so that we could get input from them as well. We're going to have a second phase in January, February, and that's when we'll get feedback on the locations that we want to focus on for our interventions. And then we'll have a final phase in April and May to get input on, in the draft plan before we finalize it. I just want to say that all of our materials have been translated into French, Spanish, and Bengali, as well as English. And the surveys are translated, and also the website has that ability to do those translations as well. So all the engagement materials have been in those four languages. And as I said, we have a website set up that talks about the project and gives people updates on what's happening with the project, and this is where they would go to fill out the surveys. So, they did that for that first phase, and then, as I said, we'll have a second survey in January and February. So for the plan development, we're finishing up our safety analysis, as I said, that incorporated the engagement information that we received, as well as all the data collection. We did field observations around the township on two full days to see firsthand how different locations functioned. We are then going to work with a steering team and township staff to hone in and choose what would be eight priority areas for review, and start coming up with countermeasures or interventions that can be done. The interventions we are planning to do, or planning to recommend, would be actionable. These are tangible things that the township can do. They're going to be laid out in what can be done short-term, you know, that low hanging fruit that can be done within a year, and then midterm, two to five years, and then what could be very long-term. And it's those long-term interventions that tend to cost the most, so that gives the township a chance to get the funding together to do that. But a lot of the countermeasures that we will recommend wouldn't just apply to these eight areas, they could often be incorporated throughout the township to address issues. So it's not just only these eight areas that would be eligible for these countermeasures. And then we will take four of those areas, and they could be intersections, they could be corridors, but for those areas, that we will then create concept plans. And this is so that people can really visualize the kind of interventions that we're suggesting. You have some very awkward intersections because of diagonal streets and such, and so when you start talking about the ways that that intersection could be changed, it might be hard for people to visualize. So those concept plans and those renderings will give people a visualization, so they have a real sense of what we're, what we're saying when we talk about the changes that could happen. Next slide, please. So here are some of our initial findings. We looked at all of the crash data in the township from 2019, and we actually incorporated up to 2024 crash data, and looked at the kinds of crashes that are happening in the township. And when I say kinds of crashes, I mean, like, is it a, an angle, are there people being rear-ended, you know, is it hitting an object? And then, we looked at the types of injuries. And so as you can see, that pedestrians are the most vulnerable users of our streets, and so they're the ones that see the most damage when it comes to, or most injuries when it comes to crashes. We also looked at the types of injuries, whether it's a serious injury or a minor injury, or there unfortunately have been fatalities on the streets in township. So, when we compare the township to peer cities in the state, the township actually has a much lower crash rate than a lot of peer cities. So, you're not starting from a very terrible place compared to how some other cities are when they're when they're looking at safety on their streets. And then the last thing that we looked at was who owned the streets, because the state and PennDOT have ownership and control of a lot of your major corridors and arteries through the township, and that makes a difference when it comes to implementation. So we're, we are looking at streets that are owned by the state, and then it's a way for us to create recommendations that the township can then talk about with PennDOT so that if PennDOT does anything to those streets, you can ensure that those changes are, are implemented. So looking at how many crashes have happened on streets that are owned by the township versus streets that are owned by the state. Next slide. And then this, it's, I'm sorry, it's very hard to see, to get a map large enough to have the whole township in, in one map, but this just shows where the crashes have happened that are reflected in the, the data that I showed on the previous slide. But this is on our website, and so people can go to the website and do a deep dive to see exactly where crashes have happened. Thank you. And we used this map and talking with township staff to find the areas that we chose for our field observations. So we, we observed a number of locations around the township on those two days. So if I may, I would like to take this time to get your input on a couple of questions. You know, one of the things that we want to know is, you know, what do you see is the greatest challenge or priority for improving transportation or roadway safety in Upper Darby? Or what opportunities that you see to improve street safety? You know, I, we can leave these questions with you, and you can give it to us at a later time. I don't mean to put you on the spot,
No, that's fine.
But we do want to make sure that we get your input.
Did the crash analysis lead you to these, do you have these eight, eight areas ID'd yet?
Not yet.
Not yet.
That, that's our next phase, is to, is to work with stakeholders and the steering team and township officials to finalize what those eight locations should be.
Okay. How about any hotspots that crashes, that jump off the page, anything, or?
I'll have Bianca come and speak to that because she, she managed the teams that did the field observations.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. But yeah, absolutely. Hotspot corridors, locations, Marshall Road around sixty-ninth Transportation Center, Garrett and Lansdowne, State and Lansdowne, a lot of the locations. But honestly, when you look at the data, it's like every single street is having crashes all the time. So really figuring out where the most crashes and where the highest injury crashes so that the improvements can have the highest impact.
Okay, all right. So get back to the questions.
Without, without seeing the data to know if this really plays out or not, I feel like one of the challenges is the PennDOT roads, the PennDOT-owned roads. You know, we, you hear things in different meetings where either someone will come to the podium with a concern at a council meeting and so on, and very often it's like, well, that's PennDOT Road. And so I think for us, that'll, that, that's going to be a, a bit of an issue.
One of the things that we have found to be very effective in other locations is to have these recommendations in your back pocket so that when you find out the streets are on PennDOT's paving plan, when they do the repaving, that's a very easy time for PennDOT to implement the, the changes that you would like to see happen. So that's one of the advantages of having a plan, is that you can go to PennDOT with specific asks and, and get them to do those interventions when they do updates to their roads.
I was at the October twenty-third feedback session, and I agree, Deb, that, you know, Township Line Route One is one of these roads that PennDOT, you know, it goes back and forth who's really responsible for it. So, I mean, that is a challenge because then nothing really gets done. Because, you know, I mean, we've had bollards that were put up probably five years ago that had been run over in front of, like, Rita's, and they still haven't been replaced yet. So it's, you know, things like that that are very frustrating. And so, but I, I have a question, though. The, in December, you said you're going to have another meeting, will be similar to the October meeting? I'm like, will you do that same type of feedback?
Sunday, in December, it's the steering team that is meeting.
Okay. So next year, then you do something similar to October?
So yes, next year, there'll be a feedback session that was similar to the one that we did in October.
Okay. Yeah, because I felt like it was me and Foss Avenue.
Yes.
Foss Avenue, they have, I don't know what's going on on Foss. I don't know. That was a big, that was a big group, so.
It was. And, and we have found in, in a lot of municipalities, as I'm sure you've experienced, that if it's something controversial, it gets a lot of people out. Traffic safety is not very controversial, so it's hard to make the argument as to why they should take time out of their day to come and give feedback, but I'm hoping that all of those neighbors that came in October are spreading the word, and we get a much bigger crowd at our next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So are there any policies or procedures that you think we should revisit or contemplate as we're putting our recommendations together?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure. I know, we talk about the state-owned roadways, they're, it's always a challenge to implement safety improvements, pedestrian friendly improvements, still maintain the level of service. There's a lot of, these are high-volume roads, right?
Right.
So that's, um, yeah, I, I don't know. I think we would have to be, we'd have to see, somebody, we'd have to have a menu of ideas, I think, would probably be.
Right. And that, that's certainly what we will work on when we put the countermeasures together. But we just wanted to give you an opportunity to, to weigh in, and after this meeting, if you think of anything,
Okay.
please let Josh know because he's our conduit, and he'll certainly pass on that information. So I'll just go through our next steps. So we are going to complete our safety analysis, finalize all of our field observations and data collection and such into a report. As I said, the steering team is meeting in December, and then we'll start to develop those concept plans and those actionable items that we can give as recommendations, and we'll launch our second round of engagement in January or February. Are there any questions?
I said one, just, I know you, you showed us a, you know, incredible amount of data.
Yes.
But is, is there any data in there, right in, just a slide, but sort of like drunk driving or, like, accidents, or is like, is that a big spike in our, in any of our actions? You said they're happening everywhere all the time, but is that just diffuse?
Right. We did not look at the causes of those crashes. If it was somebody falling asleep or drunk driving or whatever, that was not part of our analysis. We really just looked at the locations and the severity.
Like, some of the locations you called out are, like, pretty close to bars of parking lots, so just, that's something to think about, or if you can think about, or how do you make a intersection safer if you know that the people driving are not going to be a hundred percent there?
Right. Well, that, that's a good point. That's something that we can definitely look into.
Come on up.
Good evening, ma'am. Steve Lockard, four-two-seven Spruce Avenue. I believe in the last ten years, eight to ten years ago, at least two major planning studies were done, at least one of which was by Michael Baker. That was for the Darby Creek Trail from the Havreford Line down through Pilgrim Park, under or across Township Line, through Drexel Nine, down through Drexel Brook, down to Bloomfield, and then down to the Addingham Manor. That's something that was already done. I don't know how much more has to be done on that to look at it. The other one was, there was a TPD study on Garrett Road, and that was eight to ten years ago, talking about traffic ions at the crossings for the Septa Trolleys, et cetera, and for the school, and to go into the park. I don't know if we need to reinvent the wheel, but there are certainly two things that have already been looked at, certainly be looked at again.
Thanks, Steve. Do we, we know where the Garrett Road Study, whatever came of that, or?
Yep, they're, they're still working on implementation, I believe. So I believe it will be between.
They are pulling projects out?
Yeah, they, they are pulling project. There, there's one project in the works right now. I'm trying to think of the cross streets that it's between. I think it ends around Shadland.
Okay.
But I'd have to double-check where that project is. But yeah, I, and one of the spots that you're speaking of is definitely happening, and that is the intersection across from Naylor's Run and the Barclay Square Shopping Center that enters right at the beginning of the gates. There will be a, a concrete pedestrian island in the middle of that crosswalk, and that's one of the improvements that came out of that TPD study. So it's not, I don't think they're going to be doing all of it, but they are going to be doing the section centered around the Naylor's Run location.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the LSA Grant Recommendation Letter for the Collinbrook Creek Gabian Retaining Wall Reconstruction Phase Two.
Yep, so this is one of the letter of supports, which we've written a couple of this year.
Okay.
And the township is currently applying for an LSA grant to fund the Collinbrook Creek retaining wall reconstruction. I'm actually going to pull up a map to kind of give you guys a better picture. I'll share that now. But essentially, the current Gabian wall is about, I think it was fifty or, I think it's about fifty years old, and it's starting to fail. We already had a partial collapse that cost the township a lot of money in emergency funds. So this Phase Two, right, is to replace and maintain the other sections of the Gabian wall before it fails, to be preventative. This backs up to our neighbors on Arrowhead Lane, and to make sure that, right, they don't lose the backs of their properties into the creek. We very much ask for the support of the Planning Commission to lend their voice to apply for this grant. It does meet with goal number four and action number nine of the 2018 Comprehensive Plan, which is reconnecting our neighborhoods to safe, attractive, and sustainable environments, specifically action item nine, which is continue to work with the EAC and Eastern Delaware County Stormwater Collaborative to improve stormwater management and water quality in Upper Darby Township. This project will do both of those things. It will improve stormwater management by, I believe they're also going to be naturalizing the stream, taking out all of the old rocks that have fallen out of those old Gabian walls, and then also reinforcing it, stopping further erosion, which would affect residents downstream. So it should hit both of those, both of those action item pieces. Is there any questions from the board or any changes to the letter itself? It is your letter, so any recommendations will pick up before Jeff would sign if there's a motion to approve.
What's, what's LSA?
Oh.
Sorry.
No, no, it's all right. I have it. Local share agreement, yeah.
What is it?
Local share, it's gambling money.
Oh.
Yeah, that's it.
So is any of this area going to be impacted by the proposed Mazino development?
No, that's further south.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's like, see my mouse? That's like south of here.
Okay.
So this will all be upstream.
Do you need a mo, do you need a motion to prepare the letter?
Yeah, or any changes. Yep.
Okay. I don't have any changes to it. Motion for the township to prepare a letter for the LSA grant for the Collinbrook Retaining Wall.
Bring that motion.
Okay, all right. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. I'll sign it tonight.
Perfect.
That's what we have for our agenda. Is there any public comment this evening? Anybody at all? All right.
Okay.
Eric Nunn? Anything else? Any good business or anything?
No.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn?
All right, thanks.